Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting this evening. It's Tuesday, April the 2nd, 2024. It is 6:00 PM and we are in the community wing of City Hall. So I would ask if you would please rise and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance and following the pledge, you're welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment.
I am the Pledge of Allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No. If I could ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor Alvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Hyder.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Pontieri.
Present.
All members are present.
Thank you. As we follow the agenda this evening, we begin with our proclamations and presentations. And our first proclamation will be delivered by Councilwoman Hyder regarding Parkinson's Awareness Month. If there are any folks in the audience who are part of this proclamation ceremony, please come forward.
Good evening. Nice to see you.
Good evening.
Would you like a chair?
Thank you for your service, sir. Thank you.
Very good. Please.
Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you, Brittany. Do we need one more? Need another chair? We're good? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I am honored to be here this evening to read this proclamation honoring our Parkinson Disease families and community, and many of which I have known myself to suffer with the disease. So I'd like to present. Whereas Parkinson's Disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease and is second most common neurogenerative disease in the United States. And whereas Parkinson's Disease is estimated to affect approximately 1 million in the United States and the prevalence will more than double by 2040. And whereas Parkinson's Disease is the 14th leading cause of death in the United States according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. And whereas it is estimated that the economic burden of Parkinson's Disease is at least $52 billion annually, including indirect costs to patients and family members of $29 billion. And whereas research suggests the cause of Parkinson's Disease is a combination of genetic and environmental factors, but the exact cause and progression of the disease is still unknown. And whereas there is no objective test or biomarker for Parkinson's Disease and there is no cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease. And whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's Disease vary from person to person and can include tremors, slowness of movement, and rigidity, difficulty with balance, swallowing, chewing, and speaking, cognitive impairment and dementia, mood disorders, and a variety of other non-motor symptoms. And whereas volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals are working to improve the quality of life of persons living with Parkinson's Disease and their families. And whereas increased research, education, and community support services such as those provided by Parkinson's Foundation and other organizations are needed to find more effective treatments to provide access to quality care and those living with the disease today. Now therefore, it be proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that April 2024 be officially designated as Parkinson's Awareness Month. And calls upon all the citizens to raise awareness of the need for research and support for those in the community living with Parkinson's Disease. Signed this second day of April 2024, City Clerk Kaylee Cook and our Honorable Mayor David Alvin.
So thank you, guys. This is great. This is our second year doing this. I did write something just in case I forgot. But on behalf of Parkinson's of Flagler, Palm Coast, we thank you for recognizing that April is Parkinson's Awareness Month. As you see behind me, we have a monthly meeting. And this meeting has anywhere from 20 people to 50 people that come every month. I get a call every single week of somebody being newly diagnosed. So this disease is out there, and I know last year we talked about it. In Flagler County, we only have two full-time neurologists here. I know we've talked about that last year, too. And so there is a need for more neurologists in Palm Coast. A lot of these people, they go to Gainesville, they have to go to Orlando, they have to go to Jacksonville. So I know we've talked about this, but we just wanted to make more awareness of Parkinson's and the group that we have. If anybody knows anybody that has Parkinson's, we meet the third Wednesday at every month at the community center here. And we would love to have anybody that wants to come and volunteer or just join us at any time. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I got everybody. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
See ya.
the most essential part of our daily life and especially important here in Florida. Whereas water is a basic and essential need for every living creature. And whereas the state of Florida, Water Management Districts, and Palm Coast are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas Palm Coast and the state of Florida has designated April typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas Palm Coast has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events. And whereas every business industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water. And whereas every business industry, school, and citizen can help by saving water and thus promote a healthy economy and community. And whereas outdoor irrigation comprises a large portion of water use, you will encourage citizens and businesses to focus on improving outdoor irrigation efficiency. It says on my proclamation, "Your name." So what that means is if each of you can become ambassadors to promote the efficient use of irrigation, it will go a long way to supporting the Water Conservation Month this month. So therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of April 2024 be officially designated as Water Conservation Month, signed by our city clerk and myself. So congratulations.
Thank you.
So let me introduce Gretchen Smith, who most of you probably know, but has dedicated this part of her life to water everywhere. So please, Gretchen.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm Gretchen Smith, and I'm Water Conservation Coordinator, one of two at the St. John's River Water Management District. You may have known me in past lives from Chamber. I know quite a few people here from the Chamber, and also I worked at the Health Department for a little bit. But now I'm working in water conservation, and I couldn't be happier. So I love the fact that this says that outdoor irrigation comprises a large part of the water that needs to be conserved. And that's really true because of more than 50% of water use in residential homes is outdoors. But here's a tip. So Florida gets like 54 inches of water, of rain, a year. And so in most cases, there's probably not a need to water your lawns more than twice a week. You don't need to do it five days a week. During the winter, you know, one day a week if it needs it. If it rains, you don't need to water that week. So there's little things that everyone can do to make sure that we're conserving water. You know, we're here in North Florida, and there are constraints that are to our water supply. And we want to do whatever we can and whatever the residents here can do to conserve water because we want to make sure that it's not only here for us, but it's here for future generations. And clean, prolific water is something that we all need. So thank you.
If I could ask you just to very briefly describe what the St. John's Water Management Responsibility is.
Okay. So St. John's River Water Management District is one of five water management districts in the state of Florida. And we are challenged with the balance between managing water resources and managing water supply. So when a developer comes to us and says, "We want to build a new neighborhood," we say, "Okay, how much water are you going to need?" And then we have to go through a permitting process. And so basically, we are kind of the checks and balances that if there's development, we make sure that resources are there, but also resources like water aren't going to be constrained.
Very good. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation will be Councilwoman Pontieri talking about distracted driving.
Good evening. Chief, how are you? I have distracted driving.
Thank you. Sorry.
Whereas distracted driving is an epidemic on our roadways, claiming thousands of lives and injuring hundreds of thousands each year in the United States. And whereas informing drivers of the dangers of using a handheld communications device while operating a motor vehicle is essential to reducing distraction-related fatalities and injuries. And whereas distracted driving occurs when drivers engage in activities that divert their attention from the road, such as texting, talking on a cell phone, adjusting the radio, or interacting with passengers. And whereas National Highway Traffic Safety Administration states that each day in the United States approximately nine people are killed and more than 1,000 are injured in crashes that reportedly involve a distracted driver. And whereas increased awareness about the dangers of distracted driving may reduce traffic fatalities and injuries in Palm Coast and throughout the country. And whereas the City of Palm Coast believes a month dedicated to programs and activities focused on reducing distracted driving will significantly raise awareness. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor in the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of April 2024 be officially designated as Distracted Driving Awareness Month. Where we are committed to establishing a strong culture of personal responsibility and a cultural norm of driving habits that increase the safety of all road users. Signed this second day of April 2024, attested to by our city clerk Kaylee Cook and signed by Mayor David Alvin.
Just really quickly, I have to do a very quick plug, too, for our first responders. You know, as a wife of a first responder, when you see police and fire on the side of the road and you are distracted and you're driving, it's so easy to hit these guys. It's really important that we're being mindful of not just when we're driving, we don't want to be distracted, but be mindful of moving over, too, because the last thing we need is to lose one of our first responders because they're doing their job. So just something to think about, too.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Pontieri. And so we just want to encourage all of our residents to, you know, pay attention to the road and not get distraction. Our attention is for sale, and more than ever, it's become a commodity. So there's so many, you know, really smart folks trying to get it. But when we're on the road, the most important thing is for us to be safe, for us to take care and to set a great example for the little ones and for some of our older ones, too. So if you guys can just pay attention to the road and encourage your friends and neighbors to do the same, because you don't want to see us in a way that's not like a smiling, funny day like today. We don't want to be there, but we're willing to. But we really want you to be safe. So all the prevention that we can help you with, encourage you to do, is important to us. This is a really important message. Thank you.
And Councilwoman Clufus will do our final proclamation regarding Public Safety Telecommunications Week. I guess I got you out of order there. Sorry about that.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I cannot overstate the criticality of the roles that you guys serve in our community. So first of all, thank you for everything. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is paramount, it's critical of the protection of life and preservation of property, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Flagler County Emergency Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link of our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications for Flagler County have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that the week of April 14th, 2024, be officially designated as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Signed this second day of April 2024, Mayor David Alvin. Thank you very much. And Kaylee Cook, City Clerk. And before the applause, I just want to honestly, from the bottom of my heart, you are the first line when we reach out as Palm Coast residents, Flagler County residents. You're the ones who are picking up the phone, and that is such a critical point in this whole process. And from the bottom of my heart, I can say thank you. I've called 911 for family members, and you don't know how important it is until you're in that situation. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. My name is Christina Mortimer. I'm the Director of the Communication Center for the Sheriff's Office. For those of you that don't know, here in Flagler County, we do have a consolidated dispatch center. So that means that our dispatch center here, we dispatch for police, fire, and EMS. So if you ever have to call 911, you'll never have to be transferred. We are trained to handle whatever emergency comes through our center. In addition to answering all the 911 emergency lines, we also answer all of the non-emergency calls as well. It's the same dispatchers that are answering both. So if you're ever asked to be put on hold on the non-emergency line, it's because they need to get to an emergency call coming in. In addition to that, we also are cross-trained for radio dispatching. So our dispatchers also communicate with our first responders for fire and for law enforcement, and we dispatch all the calls to them as well. So I appreciate this proclamation tonight. If I could just share a story that just happened, just to show the importance of the role of the dispatchers. Back in December, one of our dispatchers, Lucas, answered a 911 call, and it was from a wife. Her husband was in cardiac arrest. He was not breathing. Lucas provided seven minutes of step-by-step CPR instructions to the wife. Paramedics got unseen. Patient was transported. Lucas moves on to the next call because that's what we do. We just go from one call to the next. And we never find out the outcome, or usually we don't find out the outcome. It's part of the job, one of the hardest parts of the job. About three weeks ago, we got a knock on the door at dispatch, which is unusual. Nobody really comes to our door. And standing there was a husband and wife. And when I opened the door, he looked at me and he said, "I'm here to meet the dispatcher that saved my life." I just kind of stood there frozen, covered in goosebumps because that has never happened. I've been with the sheriff's office for 16 years, and we've never had anybody come to dispatch to thank us for the job that we do. So it was definitely one of the most monumental memories I'll always have. But he told us that his doctor told him that if it was not for that dispatcher, for getting CPR started as fast as they did, he wouldn't be there today. So it just kind of shows the important role that dispatchers play. If you're not aware, dispatchers are not recognized as first responders in the state of Florida. So that is why these proclamations mean so much. Knowing that we have the local support and the recognition means a lot to everybody in the center. So on behalf of everybody in the Sheriff's Office Communication Center, we thank you.
We now move to item D5, which is a discussion regarding interim city manager. This is some housekeeping business, I think, to attend to first. We have a, in your package, there was a contract for the interim city manager, acting city manager, actually. So I think it would be appropriate to start off, if there are questions regarding the contract which was in your agenda package.
I have no questions at this moment, but I would like to make a motion.
Hold on. I have questions.
Yeah, let me just get through, let me get through discussion first because it is a contract. So please, go ahead.
Am I on here? Okay. So the motion that I made at the last business meeting was that we appoint Lauren Johnson as the acting city manager per our city charter until we hire a permanent city manager. That passed unanimously. And what I'm seeing in the contract is that we can fire her without cause. That's listed in a couple places in the contract, so I have an issue with that language, being that the motion that unanimously passed is that she is to remain in place until a permanent city manager is hired. Specifically, if we look at sections 2D and 2F, they reference our ability to fire her without cause. So I think that that should be changed to with cause. Obviously, if something is done that warrants being fired, that shouldn't be taken from us. But without cause was not in the motion, and it should be stricken or changed, the language of the contract.
So understood. Are there questions regarding Councilwoman Pontieri's suggested change?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
We have always been able to hire or fire attorneys and city managers without cause. And that is something that's in our charter. It's not something we can change. Also, Lauren Johnson, who's done a really great job as assistant city manager, automatically became the acting city manager once Denise Bevan vacated this dais. We are now here to appoint an interim city manager. And again, I would like to make my motion, Mr. Mayor.
So I'm going to grant you the time to make a motion. Just one thing, because I got to take care of the housekeeping. So there is a contract in the package. Councilwoman Pontieri has requested a change. And councillor, do you need to weigh in on this at this time?
I will, but...
Only because there was a suggestion. Okay. Regarding the legality of the change to the contract, does that represent any issue from a legal standpoint?
Of course, from a legal standpoint. I mean, the council reserves the right to select its city manager, even the acting city manager, at any time. I don't, while I respect the comment, I don't know why the city council would want to hamstring itself to remove the acting city manager for cause only, especially when the contract is written in a way that the acting city manager, once she's relieved of duty, whether a permanent is appointed or the council wants another acting city manager, she goes back to her assistant city manager position. So I mean, it's council's prerogative, but you know, I think the council, in my experience and opinion, should reserve the right to select its city manager or acting city manager at your pleasure.
So I would move forward for consensus now regarding Councilwoman Pontieri's suggested change. I mean, we'll just, I'll move to the motion just to...
But I am still concerned that this would be a violation of our city charter.
It's not a violation of the charter.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Easy, easy.
I'm asking our attorney. My understanding is that that's our right within that charter. We exercised that a couple weeks ago with our previous city manager. I know it was done not while we were here, but I think Mr. Clufus might have been here when it happened the last time, without cause. I would not see any reason why we would forfeit that right with any city manager.
So councillor, that would be a specific question. So it's been brought up. Is there a, does that violate the charter as it's currently written in any way?
I don't, while I respect the comment, I don't know why the city council would want to hamstring itself to remove the acting city manager for cause only, especially when the contract is written in a way that the acting city manager, once she's relieved of duty, whether a permanent is appointed or the council wants another acting city manager, she goes back to her assistant city manager position. So, I mean, it's council's prerogative, but, you know, I think the council, in my experience and opinion, should reserve the right to select its city manager or acting city manager at your pleasure.
So I would, I would move forward for consensus now regarding Councilwoman Pontieri's suggested change. I mean, we'll just, I'll move to the motion just to.
But I am still concerned that this would be a violation of our city charter.
It's not a violation of the charter.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Easy, easy, easy.
I'm asking our attorney. My understanding is that that's our right within that charter. We exercised that a couple weeks ago with our previous city manager. I know it was done not while we were here, but I think Mr. Clufus might have been here when it happened the last time, without cause. I would not see any reason why we would forfeit that right with any, any city manager.
So Counselor, that would be a specific question. So it's been brought up, is there a, does that violate the charter as it's currently written in any way?
I think the charter writ, I have to look it, look it up, but I think the charter's written in a way where the council reserves the right to make the hiring and firing and decision of the city manager at the council's pleasure. Now, there's a procedure that if the council were to act to terminate the city manager, there is a procedure by which, for cause, there's a procedure by which the manager can request a hearing and reconsideration of the.
Within a timeframe, correct.
Within a timeframe. I think it's seven days off the top of my head.
Thirty, yeah, request, yeah.
Seven days from the day to the action of the council, so.
So Councilwoman Pontieri, before I proceed on, do you want to comment on that based on your, because I'm going to have to ask for consensus here before we.
Well, I don't, I don't think there needs to be consensus. It would be a motion to accept the contract with the amendment because it would be a majority vote. So it would be a motion to accept the contract with the amendment that'd be without cause. And the reason, Mayor, is not based on what we normally have the right to do. It's based on the language of the motion that passed unanimously at the last meeting. That specifically, if we look at the meeting minutes, and I clarified this numerous times, I restated my motion per the meeting minutes, unless somebody wants to now contest those minutes. Councilwoman, Councilmember Pontieri restated the motion to appoint Assistant City Manager Lauren Johnson to Acting City Manager while council looks for a permanent hire. Then Councilmember Hyder, if you'll recall, specifically asked, "Well, how long could that be?" And you, Mayor, said, "Well, I mean, that we, you know, we really don't know. That's undetermined." And so we clarified that she was to remain in place until a permanent city manager was appointed. Because that motion passed four to zero, Vice Mayor Danko was not here, that is the motion that should stand unless somebody now wants to reverse that motion, and they'd have to be in the majority of that vote in order to do that, which he was not. So somebody who voted for Lauren Johnson to be our acting city manager until we hired a permanent city manager would now, per our policies and procedures, per Robert's rules, would now have to ask for reconsideration of that motion.
Except that motion was not correct to begin with. She was already acting city manager.
She wasn't. Our charter says we have the right to appoint an acting city manager per our legal counsel's advice that Mayor asked for. That is what we did.
Again, she was already acting.
No, she wasn't, Vice Mayor.
I let you speak. Please let me speak.
But you're incorrect.
No, but you're interrupting me. And whether you think I'm incorrect is irrelevant. I still get to speak.
All right, let's move on with the issue.
And so my feeling is this position automatically happened the moment Denise Bevan left.
Have you read the charter?
Are you going, yes, I've read the charter.
Where does it say that?
Please do not interrupt me again. I don't interrupt you, Teresa.
Okay, let's move it on. Now, okay, there is a, Councilwoman Pontieri, do you need to weigh in on that?
On the charter.
There's a disagreement on the interpretation of the charter.
No, the charter requires the city council to even appoint an acting city manager. So with all due respect, I would disagree that it was automatic, that Ms. Johnson would be the interim. It required a majority vote of the council to make her an interim city manager.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pontieri, I'm going to ask you just to restate your motion.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I want to make a motion first.
Well.
You get to jump in line.
That, we're going by the agenda.
Yeah, we're going by the agenda. So we're talking about the contract, the housekeeping piece.
So what exactly is this motion?
Well, that's what I'm asking for. So just listen for a minute and please restate your motion.
My motion is to accept the contract that has been properly placed on today's agenda as an agenda item for a business meeting per our policies and procedures with the amendment because of the motion that I made at the last business meeting to amend sections 2D and 2F to state that she can only be terminated with cause.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I would second for discussion, absolutely.
So I have a second from Councilman Clufus. So did you want to start the discussion?
For sure. I think if we can't come, if we can't come to consensus that without cause being an issue, I think the bigger problem is that, at the very least, we didn't have a discussion for vacating our city manager position. So I hope that we could all come to a consensus that it's really the abruptness of the, what took place that gives me caution to side with Councilwoman Pontieri, that in a case where we do want to remove our acting city manager, even our formal city manager, I think it would probably be prudent for the city to act in a way where we have to have a discussion amongst our city council before we do so. And I think now we might even be more in a fragile state if we are, if we are trying to do things without having them workshopped first.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion? Care to comment?
I think that the council may need to discuss this a little bit further unless we're going to have clear counsel, which I think we probably already have from our counsel. And I think the discussion that I had with Lauren just yesterday, she pretty much clarified to me with what it means to be terminated with cause or without cause. And my understanding on that is that if you terminate it with cause, you can appeal it, but the council has the right to terminate without cause also. And that also allows certain stipulations to be provided to that city manager or a person that's being fired without cause, such as severance pay and a few other things we discussed. So I'm not totally clear on what we're doing here unless the council can really make it clear to me so that I can understand.
So Counselor, can you clarify the motion and the second that's in front of us now, just to make sure that all council members are clear on what the upcoming vote would be?
And based, and based on the charter, what the charter says.
Okay. I would ask the clerk to just rephrase the motion and then I will comment regarding the charter and the actual language that's in the proposed contract.
So the motion was to accept the contract, which has been placed in the agenda, but with an amendment to sections 2D and 2F to state that Ms. Johnson could only be terminated with cause.
Does that clarify where we are right now for you?
I think so.
Okay, thank you. If you have a question, please ask, okay? Any, yes?
Oh, I wanted to then comment about the charter. Your question, okay. So the charter provides that the city council has the authority to appoint both a permanent city manager and then the vacancy occurs in the city manager position, the council has the right to appoint an acting city manager. This interim services agreement is about assigning the duties on a temporary basis of city manager to Ms. Johnson. Okay? And so paragraphs D and F are, in my view, are written in a way that if the council is unhappy with Ms. Johnson or, you know, just wants to replace Ms. Johnson's services as acting city manager, then this contract says the council reserves the right to do that. And then the contract says she goes back to her assistant city manager position. And subparagraph D that Ms. Pontieri references, it states that the employee acknowledges that this position as acting city manager is a temporary assignment and that the council, you know, is actively recruiting a permanent city manager. And then at such time, the permanent city manager commences his employment, his or her employment, or the council terminates the employee as acting city manager, not as an employee of the city, but as an acting city manager, the duties of an acting city manager. Then the employee is entitled to return to and resume her previous position as assistant city manager. Subparagraph D goes on to say that nothing in this agreement shall prevent, limit, or otherwise interfere with the, with the right of the city to terminate at its will and without cause the services of the employee as the acting city manager, subject to the employee's right to continue as, as the assistant city manager. So it's all about not terminating her, her employment with the city, but relieving her, relieving her of her duties as acting city manager at the discretion of the city council. And my point is, why would you want to hamstring yourself and only have the ability by contract to, to, you know, reassign her back to her old position? I mean, that's council's prerogative, but I don't think it's advisable.
And just, just to highlight real quick, that's actually why I seconded for discussion is if Councilwoman Pontieri's motion goes too far, then at the very least, I think we should dial it back, that we can remove an interim city manager without cause with the prerequisite that we have a workshop around it. What I think my biggest qualm is that we hadn't had a discussion amongst our city council members of the previous situation that occurred. So if we can't gain consensus, because I understand where our legal counsel is coming from in that regard, but I think at the very least, we should be ensuring that we have a proper, not only public notice for this type of issue, but also for all of our council members to be able to weigh in on such a, I want to say, heavy decision, because it is.
Okay. And Counselor, just one other question. In terms of, if we follow Councilwoman Pontieri's requested change to contract, does that set precedent that could be used by others in the future in any way?
Well, I mean, it will be.
We are suggesting that we, we keep our, we protect the rights of city council as best we can. Does this open that door for precedents?
Well, I think it becomes part of the record, but contracts are negotiable. So I don't think it sets precedent in that regard.
Okay. Additional discussion? I'm going to ask for a vote on this.
I would disagree that any, on that one subject, anything we do does set a precedent. And what we are looking at here, and this is labeled right in our agenda, it's not acting city manager that we're discussing, it's interim city manager. And that, to me, is a different position.
Counselor, I got to ask you, with the legal, not gargonies, jargonies, acting versus interim, are you, is there a legal differential there in those two words? I'm not a lawyer, I can't speak to that.
The charter, the charter refers to it as acting city manager and interim city manager. It's a temporary, it's a temporary appointment that you're, that you're considering.
Any final discussion before I call for a vote?
Well, Mayor, I mean, I take everybody's comments seriously and the input, and I agree with Councilman Clufus's position. I also agree, you know, I don't want to hamstring anybody, but the motion was we would keep Ms. Johnson in the position of acting city manager until we have a permanent hire. That was the motion, that's what passed. If we don't want to change the language of the contract, which I'm okay with, but it needs to be very clear that that was the motion that passed, also, I agree that, first of all, and this is no disrespect to you, Mayor, but it's my opinion that the, adding the agenda item during your comments to the agenda last time was not in accordance with our policies and procedures. So if this issue does come up again, it does, the way it should work per our policies and procedures is that there should be consensus to have a discussion regarding the city manager's position. Consensus has to be garnered from city council, and then it's put on the agenda for the next meeting. That is how our policies and procedures work. So that is what should have been done. It is, if we are going to accept the contract as is, then great, but there needs to be an understanding that if we are going to take action to remove her, which would be improper based on the motion, but if that's the action that wanted to be taken, consensus from city council would have to be garnered, and then it would have to be put on the next business meeting agenda.
So what you're asking is, in the future, if we were to change or add to our policies and procedures, which I have here, that there be some workshopping process in advance of this type of decision? That's the kind of thing what you're asking.
No, I'm not asking for a change. I'm asking for us to follow the way they're currently written.
So where in the policies, the meeting policies and procedures does it suggest that that has to happen?
So the meeting policies and procedures, first of all, under section H of, if you go to V, Order of Business, section A says, "There shall be an official agenda for every meeting at the city, at city council, which shall determine the order of business conducted at the meeting. All proceedings and the order of business at all meetings of the city council shall be conducted in accordance with the official agenda, subject to matters being added to an agenda consistent with these policies and procedures." If you scroll down to section H, it says, "City Council Comments." And this is why I bring this up, Mayor, because the action that you took two weeks ago was during the city council comments.
Correct.
The purpose of city council comments is to promote the public discussion of city business and to encourage the dissemination of information. The city council shall take no major policy action without an agenda item unless such is approved by the consent of the city council, but may take action to address exigent matters, which relieving our city manager was not, or to ensure, hold on, or to ensure that matters are addressed in a timely manner. Then, if we go down to section J, it says placing items on an agenda. Matters may be placed on the agenda by the city manager or by any member of the city council. When a city council member wishes to place a matter on the agenda, the city council member shall raise the matter at a regular city council meeting or workshop and seek the city council's consent for inclusion of the matter at the next available regular agenda or in exigent circumstances or circumstances clearly warranting immediate action on the current agenda. So you have to get consent either way.
Except you used the word exigent, and that's the same word that I use. So we can look up the definition, but we both know what it means. So that would be the basis for which.
That's an emergency.
Well, okay.
And removing our city manager was certainly not an emergency.
In your opinion.
Okay. But either way, Mayor, you had to have gotten consent to either add it to this agenda.
Not if it, it specifically excludes if it's in exigent circumstances, what's I'm blaming.
And Mr. Mayor, I would add precedent for that.
Language is fairly simple there.
Precedent for that had already been previously set when the last city manager was terminated without cause.
Doesn't make it right.
It became a precedent that was not challenged and, you know, so in a court of law, precedent has.
So with regard to the contract which is being discussed now, if there's no further discussion, I would go ahead and ask for a.
Talking about Matt Morton or Jim Landon?
I'm sorry?
We're talking about Matt Morton or Jim Landon?
Jim Landing.
Okay.
Yeah, Matt Morton, despite what I've read from other people, obviously, he was not terminated. He resigned.
But also just to lay a little framework back then, too, we had a bunch of meetings about how we were going to move forward from Jim Landon, moving forward. And I just wanted to make the public clear, back in 2017, we had many, many workshops about how we were going to be able to transition forward successfully. So I just wanted to add that detail in there. It wasn't, it wasn't just on, you know, onsite.
So again, if there's no further discussion, I'll go ahead and ask the clerk to, does anybody need the motion restated? Are we good? So we're voting on the contract itself now?
Are we on Teresa's motion?
Correct, yes.
So I'll amend my motion.
Yeah.
I'm happy to amend my motion. I'm happy to make a motion to accept the contract as is with the recognition that the motion that carried unanimously was to keep Lauren Johnson as our acting city manager until we permanently hire a city manager. That was the motion.
So that's your motion?
So that's my motion.
Okay. Now, there was a second, so are you okay to have that changed?
I'm okay with the amendment, and I'm just, if we're going to try to move in a different direction, the most important thing to me is that we have this notice to the public, but also that we have a discussion about this amongst our council. What my biggest fear is that we are making moves up here that we haven't actually discussed amongst ourselves to try to set the vision for how we're going to be able to move forward. And I believe that would take care of that, right?
Yes.
Would you agree with that? Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion and we have a second. So if there's no further discussion, does this need to go out to the public?
Of course.
Okay. Then at this point in time, I would open up this agenda item for public comment. Three minutes, please.
Peter Johnson, Palm Coast. So I agree with both Teresa and Mr. Clufus. And one of my personal concerns was, I did a public records request with the city, and I asked for Denise Bevan's contract. And in the contract, it specifically states the, why you can fire her with or without cause. One of the reasons to fire her with cause was you had to do basically a, it didn't specify the time period, but it said that you had to refer to an employee, I'm forgetting the jargon right now, to be perfectly honest with you, like a, sort of a overview of how her performance, basically. Like, I forget what the specific word.
Speak into the mic.
Sorry, a performance review, basically. And you could fire her based off of that. But after doing more research and requesting that performance review, you guys never did a performance review for Denise, ever. So firing her with cause was not even a possibility because you didn't do the performance review. So to fire, to keep the option to fire someone without cause, I understand the council's concern, but it's pretty apparent, and I think Ms. Johnson even is aware, that you guys are going to place her back into her position. So to fire, to keep firing without cause, it has to be addressed. You guys have to have some sort of public participation, as Mr. Clufus is, or some sort of discussion before you guys just at-will fire someone. And then to furthermore, to even try to make the motion to go forward with it, like, I'm not sure that this council's the one that should be able to make that decision, quite frankly, because. should be able to make that decision, quite frankly, because most likely, three of you won't be here. So the biggest thing is, is if you want transparency, and you want to go forward and make sure that we have everything in place for her, I don't think it's unreasonable to set some standards into how we hire and fire the city manager. And to do it like a Trump-style apprentice show, while I understand that this is the dais and it has to be done, you guys are only responsible for her, her, and the city attorney, it was just extremely unprofessional in the manner that it was handled. So going forward, it is imperative that we do it in a way more professional and appropriate manner. I'll just say that.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address me on this item? Either one. Go ahead.
So first, I want, oh, Kathy, Mike, sorry. Kathy Ostrino, Palm Coast resident. I appreciate you bringing up Landen. I forgot about that. We had tons and tons of meetings about that. So, and if I go too early in the agenda for what I have to say, just please let me know. But I feel like this is the opportunity to, to say what's going on. You know, perception is reality. And here, we have, you know, the sudden firing, and I, I struggle with it. I, I agreed that she needed to not be in that position, nothing against her. I don't like how it went down. I, that's, you know, that's what I struggle with. But it looks like there's a hidden agenda going on, and it looks very gamy with, with some councillors and not other councillors, and it's very concerning. And now, of course, we have the article, the rumor on the street is that we're looking at, or someone, or maybe a couple, are looking at bringing back someone from the past. If you recall, the, the, and I pulled some old information, on December 19th, 2018, it was published, "Teacher police, fire unions join call to fire Craig Coffey with the help from Melissa Holland." You recall that. You were in the meetings, I believe, with me. Not with me, but I think we were in the same meetings. It was horrifying to treat a man this way. You know, we don't want that. However, that, that name will come back, Melissa Holland. Then, February 20th, 2019, Flagler chooses Jerry Cameron as interim county administrator. Okay. Then, I met with Jerry, just so you have my experience. On Tuesday, May 14th, 2019, I scheduled a meeting with him, as he is now the county manager. That meeting lasted one minute. He was so rude, and just, I, I, seriously, one minute, I sat down, he was disgraceful to me, and I just got up and walked out. That'll come back, too. Then, November 20th, 2019, I sent an email to Jerry with a screenshot of one of the county commissioners bribing one of our residents. I'm still waiting to hear back from him. I checked my email. I don't have a return email on that one. November 22nd, 2019, in August of 2019, Cameron sold land to the Mullins Company. You remember Mullins? He was a fellow on the county commission who wanted to decapitate our Democrat, Democrat friends. You remember that? They were close. They used to go to games together. I have tickets and pictures, and they were very close. He sold it for $100,000 less than it was listed. It's probably perfectly fine, probably perfectly legal. I have tons of things he tried to do in elect, interfering with elections on two different occasions. Let's be very careful where we're going here. Let's be very careful with the hidden agendas. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Sylvia Puglisi, resident since 1991.
Thank you, Senator.
I have, before we incorporated, I went to all the county meetings. Like, I come to this. I haven't been in the last one over personal reasons. I've been, I voted for this city to incorporate, because I despise what the county was doing to us while we were under them. They even changed quite a few of the original plannings that ITT had for us, damaging Palm Coasters. We have nothing to learn from the county, absolutely nothing. And I wouldn't like really to see a former manager of the county here being a manager of this city. This is the way I feel at this moment. I think, in many ways, from my experience being a resident and taxpayer, is that we're having a problem with some of our administrators and what they do. And they influence this council, because the council and mayor cannot get into what is called, quote unquote, "micromanaging." But I will be speaking here as a paying taxpayer. Why is so many of us here in this city do not like an assistant and, and, and staff, chief, chief of staff created, a chief of staff position created for a former Home Builders' Association of almost 15 years lobbying for the local home builders? We don't like that, the residents. We don't want this person to become a manager. We don't want this person to continue influencing so much our council against the wishes of the residents. We have some administrators that have not really worked for what the best of the interest of the residents have been enduring that. And they affect you, because they present to you these plans already pre-cooked. And there is almost, you can't say no. And I see that. And so Ms. Vivian was sacrificed over that. Ms. Vivian was approachable. She tried to meet with us. She met with us trying to resolve issues. We need to try to resolve the issues with the people that we have. And if some of the ones that we have that are too powerful and control the manager, these people is the one that they need to go. Okay? We need to have a strong manager on Lauren Johnston. She could not be controlled by administrators. She needs to do what is best for the city and is best for the residents. And we'll be watching very close that. We don't need anymore this control of these developers on our, on our council, our mayor. You get a bad rap over that. You govern for us, and we elect you to represent us. Please watch what you're doing with our next manager and keep her, because at least she knows what's going on.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
I came down here for one night.
Please introduce yourself.
Do not see such a. Mayor, you have to control your staff. Last day meeting, I watched it on tape, and a councilman to call someone who's done traffic for probably 15 years here, to call him a liar is disgusting. And we know who we're talking about, Nick. There is no ban on trucks. Try driving down Florida Park Drive. Just try it, instead of living in your high-end complex. Cimarron's the same thing, fighting six years, nothing's done, nothing. You read the comments. Talk to the people on that street. Talk about what they think about the traffic, you know? You need to control your staff. Good luck, because I think you'll never get, I don't even think you'll make the primary. You'll be toasted. Take care.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this agenda item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll come back to the dais. Is there any final discussion?
Yes, I want to just make some comments to Ms. Johnson. I want you to know, I respect you tremendously. I think you've been doing a great job as the assistant city manager. I want to see you continue in that role. Nobody on this council wants to fire you. Pretty much think I speak for all of us on that. However, I don't want you to fall into the same trap that Denise Bevan fell into. Someday, you will be highly qualified to be a city manager.
Vice Mayor, address to me, please. Address to me.
Well, letting Lauren know, too.
Yeah, she can hear you.
But that day is not today, Lauren. And I'd hate to see what happened being repeated, and then down the road, a new city manager is hired, and you'll be, you know, that'll be his pleasure, what to do with anyone on staff. So I would hope that you would think about that, and realize we need to bring in somebody from the outside, somebody with a fresh perspective, at least that's my view.
Okay.
And that this is, you know, I think you would be great staying in the spot that you are in. I really do. You and Jason have been doing a great job.
Any, any final discussion?
I would just like to make a comment also to Lauren Johnston. I've had the privilege of working with you for several weeks now, and I absolutely think that you have done an amazing job as our acting city manager. And I look forward to working with you for a long time in the future. I too am not positive that you might be completely ready for this position to carry on, but I do know, moving forward, that you will be at some point. But I have to say, absolutely, you've been a joy, a pleasure to work with. I think that you know this city pretty well, inside out, and everything's that makes the wheels turn, and you're moving totally in the right direction. I want to commend you on everything you've done. Last week, I let you know when we met yesterday, you did an amazing job handling our council meeting last week. So I give you all the credit, and I think you've done an amazing job.
Final discussion?
No, all of those things, I think everything's been said.
So I just, I want to respond to Vice Mayor Danko's comments. So first of all, there, to me, your, your comments are two, there's two issues. One, feigning support of her in this position. And then, and then almost threatening that she's going to be put into the same position.
All right, all right, all right. One, one, one speaker, hold on. One speaker at a time, please.
I'm not going to sit here and tolerate that type of nonsense.
Well, then you know where the door is.
Seriously.
One speaker at a time, okay?
When you say to somebody, "I don't want you, I don't want you to fall into the same trap as Denise did," we made a motion that Lauren Johnston is to remain the acting city manager until we hire a permanent city manager, and per the mayor's suggestion, which I think we all agreed with, we were going to go to the League of Cities for that. So that's not even a real thing. We're not even doing that. She will not be permanent city manager. And per her contract, she is to go back down to acting city manager. So, or rather, assistant city manager. So if we accept the contract as is, which is what we all agreed to do two weeks ago, then we are, we are sticking with our motion, we are doing what we said we were going to do, going to the well for the permanent city manager. To now do a 180 on that, because there's been backdoor talks and dealings, is the last thing our city needs right now. What we need is light. What we need is sunshine. What we need is to stick with the motion that I made that passed, and to move forward to find a permanent city manager from the League of Cities, keeping stability and continuity in our city in the meantime. That is what is important. We are scaring off people from coming here, from developing here, from doing economic development here, because we can't even follow a motion that, that was made in pass unanimously two weeks ago. It's totally inappropriate.
Okay. All right. If there's no other discussion, then we have a contract, and a motion, and a second. So I'm going to ask the clerk to call the vote, to vote on in favor or not in favor of the amended motion.
No, it's just accepting the contract as is.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, you're right. Amending the motion, but to accept the contract as is.
Correct, as is. That's correct.
And there's some, excuse me, this question to the council. I have one other question about this contract. What is the salary?
It's, I have-
189.
189. Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion. So I'm going to ask the clerk to go ahead and call the vote.
Vice Mayor Danko?
No.
Councilmember Hyder?
No.
Councilmember Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
The motion passes three to two.
Now, as we move on with the discussion regarding interim city manager and Councilwoman Pontieri, I have met with representative of the League of Cities. They are providing us with information, which would be both candidates and, more importantly, search firms that they feel they have great experience with on a national basis. I will, as soon as I receive the information, I will give it to the clerk to share with each of the city council members. And then, with consensus, I would ask that they be placed on a next agenda, so that we can begin to discuss the process. I'd like it to be as soon as possible. So our next meeting would be a workshop, but I think that's okay, if that's, if that works for everybody.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, what are you asking to be placed on that agenda? The interim city manager position?
A discussion on the search for a permanent city manager.
I still had a motion that-
I'm getting there, I'm getting there. Hold on, we're not there yet. So this is, this is the, this is the housekeeping from the last meeting. So I said I would go out and get the information. I've requested it. I should have it. I will share it with each city council member. It'll become public record. And then that will be with consensus on a future, on the next possible city council. I guess it would be a workshop, probably. Okay? So we have consensus on that. Question?
No, I would like to say that if we were going to go in a different direction from Ms. Johnson, that is a prerogative that we can all have, but I encourage us to be able to workshop that. And I think that's exactly what you're suggesting, and I think that is fair.
Okay, very good.
I would just ask, too, Mayor, so the, the process of going to the League of Cities and getting, you know, truly going to the well, it's my opinion that those responses should be coming to all city council members at the same time, so that we're all privy to the same information.
I agree with you. Let me just give you one caveat here, which will help. We have outgrown the League of Cities' ability for them to actively work with us on identifying a permanent city manager. But I will make sure that any communication, including what I'm waiting to receive, will be copied to every city council member. So you'll have it timed, start at the same time I do.
So then, what other resources are we using?
They have resources in terms of folks they've worked with in the past, like employment agencies and things like that. They can share that information with us. They can't hold our hand through the process, as they've done with smaller cities, because we're bigger than their, their, their maximum allowable population is. So just to set everybody's expectations properly.
So then I think, what I think is a prudent thing to do is for staff to come to us at the next workshop with where exactly, like, how we're doing that process, how we're doing the search process.
Which is the workshop, I think, yes. So the answer is yes, and then we'll workshop it. I agree.
Okay.
Does the acting city manager have that information, so that you can properly present it to city council at the next workshop?
Yes, Mayor.
Very good. They also have RFPs they've used in the past, just a resource of, you know, a bible of information, which means that some of that stuff, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. It'll just be helpful. But I would ask that we get the information out to you in advance of the meeting, so that you can look at it while staff is, is preparing their presentation. Okay? Does that work for everybody?
Well, just so we're clear-
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Just so we're clear, you're not talking about the League of City picking our next city manager?
They cannot. So they cannot.
They can help us find recruiting agents.
They have resources that they will, they will share with us. They cannot actively work with us.
We'll come back to this council to make that determination.
That is correct.
As soon as we possibly can.
And, you know, I mentioned the League of Cities. Don't, don't misunderstand that I would look to any available resource or reference that could be helpful to us. I mean, League of Cities is just one, which we happen to be a member of, and we pay dues to. So there may be others that would also be appropriate. I don't know who they are just yet, but let's don't limit the, the, the resource acquisition to just that one group.
I agree. I mean, I think we really, truly need to go to the well on this and get somebody, you know, from the outside who can really come in with a fresh perspective. And I want to make sure we're using all resources at our disposal to do that.
Great. I think we all agree on that. So, so very good. Now, Vice Mayor, you, now we're finished with kind of the housekeeping from-
Got it.
From my motions from last time, and Councilwoman Pontieri, so please.
I want to make sure I understand something now. Lauren, if she was to be terminated from this job, she would go back to her other job. Is that correct, from what we just passed?
Correct.
So that would be fine. In that case, I want to pass out some material.
So the clerk has it. You need to have it.
I want to make a motion to appoint Jerry Cameron as our interim city manager.
Please, please. All right.
And as you see from the documents in front of you, Jerry listed out, and I spoke to several people before making this decision to make this motion, people I thought would be qualified, people that were not inside the building, that could bring us some sort of fresh view from the outside. Jerry has a lot of, obviously, despite the article in Flagler Live, Jerry was a city manager. Jerry also was a county administrator. Jerry was a police chief twice. Has a lot of stuff on his resume. Jerry's had an amazing life. I think he's an amazing- I think he's an amazing man, so I'd like to make a motion to appoint him as the interim city manager, which then would amend the motion from two weeks ago, and Lauren would keep her job.
So I, I think you need to formalize the motion, counselor, help me with that. Do we need a, for the motion to be correct, does it need a date, does it need, what, what, what doesn't it have that it might need, if anything?
Well, you haven't even signed the interim city manager contract, so I guess, assuming everybody signs this contract, I mean, the first step would be to, if you want to consider another interim, you'd have to have consensus to do that, and you would have to...
So is it inappropriate?
They not only, you know, make a motion to appoint that, that person, but you have to relieve Ms. Johnson from a very short tenure as, as, as assistant city manager.
So my question again to you is, is the motion appropriate as stated? Because then I'm going to have to ask for a second.
I don't, I, the clerk would have to read the motion back to me, I'm not sure I got the second part of his statement.
Yes, Mayor, I'm meaning to ask for assistance to make sure I got all of that, but my understanding was the motion is to appoint Mr. Cameron as interim city manager, and for Ms. Johnson to return to her assistant city manager position.
Point Jerry as the interim, and Ms. Johnson to attend, go back to the job as the assistant city manager.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, is there a second? Hearing no second, then the motion fails at this time. That concludes our discussion for this meeting until the next workshop regarding interim city manager. We now move to public participation. This is for items that were not previously addressed in the agenda or aren't to be addressed later in the agenda, so, anyone?
Can I comment on that?
No?
Okay, then I won't.
Good evening, Jeffrey Seib. This evening, I'm speaking on an especially important subject that has little to do with the council's work or anything directly involving city government. It's a related issue that is of importance to the people of this city, however, but one in which few have had any say in the matter as it now stands. This has to do with the recent vote by the school board to close the Belterra Swim and Rocket Club. I'm requesting the city find the means to help out residents and keep the club open, at least until there is a replacement pool up and running. This long-term community asset has been here forever, and today still provides a great service to the health and fitness of our city. Swimming is an excellent health and fitness activity, residents of all ages use the gym and tennis courts. Not every service that we have in the city pays for itself. Many people have learned to swim at Belterra Swim and Rocket Club, many families utilize the pool year round. This closing will affect my family directly and many others. My stepdaughter, who lives with my wife and I and has cerebral palsy, that has progressed to the point where she is now in a wheelchair. She utilizes the pool at Belterra for exercise. The hydraulic lift there can raise and lower her into and out of the water. In the water, she can paddle around, swim, and get the bodily movements that she and we all require for good health, that she cannot do on land. The beach doesn't work for us. There are many with similar afflictions that utilize the lift and pool. With all the millions in our local government budgets, the county, the school board, and us, it's like the lottery. We should be able to find the comparatively minuscule amount of any shortfall in funding to keep Belterra Swim and Rocket Club open. Some type of intergovernmental cooperation, we're all in this together, we're one big community. The lines of demarcation are blurred sometimes, and we drew the lines anyway. I know it's a stretch, but stretching is good for us. Mr. Mayor, sometimes you stand and stretch at the meetings. The city needs a community pool. At least until there is an alternative for year-round swimming available, let's keep Belterra Swim and Rocket Club open.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there another member of the public that would like to address, yeah, go ahead?
Celia Buglisi, I just came here mainly to speak about the same thing Mr. Seib said. I live here since 91, and the Belterra and Rocket Club pool was open, and it was an attraction offered by ITT to people that will buy here. The people that invited here even show us the pool in the Belterra and Rocket Club. This is ridiculous, that we have a city budget, I understand, 357 million, the county 228 or so, the school 325 million, and they're going to close, they're going to close a pool to 1,078 paying members, Palm Coasters, children and elderly, over $50,000 to $80,000 deficit. We should all be ashamed of ourselves. What are, what are we doing with the money? It's like I said, you know, I am going to bring here something that will be like a micromanaging. We just, in the, in the past meeting, which I watch on TV, Mr. De Lorenzo proposed is looking for an assistant manager for code enforcement. It's a six-figure pay. Do we need an assistant manager for Mrs., for Mrs. Grossman, which have done an excellent job until now? The city is moving people on the side. They moved Mr. Flanagan, Director of Utility, to one side. Are they replacing them with another six-figure, why did they do that? Whose idea was that? I have those questions because I pay taxes, and these people is paid by us. So I am asking micromanaging questions, and I, and you need, please, ask those questions for us. If you are planning through Mr. De Lorenzo to, to go looking for an, one more assistant manager here for six figures, how come we're going to leave our, our people there with the, the school board with this decision? You need to sit down with the school board, the county, the school pays for the usage of the swim team, the county pays for the usage of their residents that also, and the city helps. If you need to come up with $50,000, $80,000, ask the school board, and I know they will be willing to rent to you the, the pool for $1, because they have it bonded, they cannot sell it or give it away to you. So please, rent a pool for $1 and keep it open to all of us. This, I am being told that every, every year the city with this magnificent budget, oh, you have a problem to buy the chemicals for the Frida Samba pool. I mean, how come is that? We have this big budget, what are you wasting our monies in? We want to know what you spend our monies in, and we will love you if you give us an answer. Please, watch for our monies like we do watch our budget. We have too many Indians and too very few, too many chiefs and too very few Indians working in the city. The city of Palm Coast has 483 employees with 1,002 people on it, and the city of Deltoya has 97,000 people, and they only have 283 employees. That should tell you something.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for your comment. And Brittany, do we have the, the revenue reports available to the public? They're just over there on the table, should you have any questions about the expenditures of the budget. Brittany, I'll show you where they are. Are there any other members, yes ma'am?
Kathy Ostrino, I have two things. May, I didn't get through all of this, may I give it to the clerk so it rides with the minutes and is distributed?
What is it?
My list of concerns.
Oh, sure, yes, please.
Okay, I'll do that. Oh, and so, based on behaviors of a recent meeting, and certainly some tonight, and, you know, you know the vibe out there. Teresa had requested, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, requested some kind of an investigation to possible sunshine violations, and I'd like to know if that's being done, we withstand with that.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address me at this time? Yes, sir.
Gary Kuna, C-section. Give me a chance to run this full circle for you.
Gary, put the, just so, thanks.
Had Denise and the city engineer over a couple of months ago to look at the creation the engineer created by putting a new driveway pipe in lower than everyone else's, almost a foot lower. City engineer said he did that because he didn't want to bump in the driveway. By doing that, he created a effect of no head flow. The last house on the street should be higher or their driveway drain higher to create a negative or positive flow, so the flow flows down the swales. So I said to Denise, I said, "Why can't we do something different?" She, "Well, we can run a pipe down to the canal for you." I said, "Well, tear up my whole yard and groundwork?" That didn't, you know, so I said, "What about if we drain it into the sewer? The sewer pipe's right there." City engineer comes back, "So we can't do that, it would water down the sewage too much," all right? And he also said, "Well, we clean those drains out once a month." So he says, "You drain, where are the scratch marks removing the grids?" With that, he walked away. He didn't want to get involved in that. So the, the situation now arises, a few, can't, they can't water down the sewage. Three Tuesdays ago, Jason's in here asking for more money for pumping because of the rainwater. Pumping what? You can't pump it in the sewage, where is that money really going? Not going to the cost of running pumps, because there's no pumps to pump in the sewage, all right? So where is it going? Two months ago, he was requesting money for new sewer plants, water plants. Four of you voted to increase the builder's impact fee, which was good move, but it's not enough. It should be at least four or five times what it is. I know you're restricted on how much you can raise it, but those restrictions were based on old building costs, not the new stuff, and that needs to be changed. And you and I had that discussion. He also had an outsider come in and say, "Oh, you're having a problem with the swales because of the high tides, the king tides, and, and the increase in the ocean. Hydraulically, that can't happen unless the ocean or sea water is up in the swell, and we'd all be flooded if that was a fact." He also stated in a flagrant news, "Anybody having the houses lower than the one next to them, is there going to be their responsibility to fix it?" No. Those people should have to go and sue the builder, the city engineer that let it happen. My driveway's dropping for the fourth time because that's water that he lets, there fills up to the sewer pipe, and it runs four feet up my property line. It needs to be fixed, and you have seen it. Mr. Danko's seen it, and so has Mr. Clufus.
Very good, thank you for your comment. Are there any other speakers? Yes, ma'am, either one.
Hello, my name's Crystal Kirkland, Palm Coast. I'm speaking regarding of the pool. Being, the biggest thing that, when I first saw that on social media, is it brought me back to a picture of my daughter when she was about three years old. That was where she first learned how to swim, when we moved here. You know, it has special memories. As a single mom, you know, it's expensive to find a lot of recreational activities, especially here in Palm Coast. I feel like we're bringing a lot of people in, and like, what are, what do we have to do? We have the beach, you know, like, there's a lot of different opportunities for people to be outside and enjoy what our beautiful city has to offer, but we have to have a little bit more variety for things for people to be able to enjoy. And so, I also brought to my attention too, I don't know if, is the summer camp that, is that pool part of the summer camp, the fun in the sun? Is that going to be affected? Because I pay a pretty penny every summer for my children to attend that summer camp, and I would really hate to see my money not be utilized in the best interests of our children. So I don't know if that's something, I tried looking that up, and I was kind of, I'm not really sure where that, that answer is. But I just really wish that it would be taken into more consideration about the people, you know, we want, I'm a resident here, I work locally here, I put in my dollars here, and I want to be able to enjoy things, and so on days that we want to go and have a little bit of, you know, we're tired of the ocean, we want to have some other activities to do, I just wish that stuff would be taken into consideration. Instead of arguing up here, like children are throwing temper tantrums about certain things, I feel like there is a little bit more prevalent issues that, that we could be discussing, so I wish that would be taken into more consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Was there one more speaker, or two more, go ahead.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. Ask the weather's getting better and more children are out playing. I see children on the basketball courts at Holland Park. It still bothers me that there's so much traffic on Florida Park Drive, and the basketball courts are just 80 feet from all that traffic. Last traffic count was 7,700 cars per day, 765 trucks per day, which amounts to about 3 million cars per year. Well, these children are out there playing basketball, they're having high cardio, they're breathing heavily, and all this traffic is just 80 feet away from them. I just beg for y'all to do something about it, thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, was public comment?
Mindy Melendez, business owner and resident, with the pool, Kathy Hyder had brought up how we don't have things for the elderly or the young. I think keeping the pool open until the YMCA is able to come would be a great benefit, because we all are trying to get members to come to Palm Coast for a reason, and if there's nothing for them to do here, there's no community centers. The YMCA has been on the go since I moved here in 2011, and I would like to see that happen. I know we got some kind of grant for it, and we're just looking for land, so I just suggest keeping the pool open until, because the elderly and the young need someplace to do.
Appreciate your comment. Are there any other speakers? Yes, ma'am.
Marilyn Mack, F-section. The list is getting so long, I don't even know where to start or if I can even keep track of it anymore with not having a job. Some of my questions are, who establishes this city manager's salary? You know, it's higher than the governor's salary currently, even though he just got a raise, but it won't take into effect. That salary's also higher than a senator's salary. Just curious how that gets established. I'm also curious how the city manager's position works, that she's supposed to be, or he's supposed to be, whoever's designated, is over all staff. How do you have an independent contractor over city staff? Never seen that in my life. Okay, let's see. With the drainage issues from the higher builds, y'all should have went out with a request for proposals for a civil engineer to find out what the drainage issues were and what the resolutions and the cost would have been for it. So at this point, y'all still haven't done that, and there's no resolution, while here comes hurricane season, and our rainy season as well. My first red flag, your auditor didn't find a red flag, so this city's perfect. Never seen that either. That's your first red flag. I see lots of red flags. The other thing is, the city, even though we have really highly paid staff, again, I worked for city, state, and federal, only the GS federal employees made salaries like they make here in this city. With this city, only be 100,000 residents, so it's really amazing. And you all farm everything out. I know how that works, though. I know why you farm it out, instead of having a city staff member do it. Let's see. The Bear, Belterra Pool, it's just amazing to me that that's going to happen, and I would actually question whether or not that was legal, because it was ITT Tech, the developers, that gave that to us tax-paying residents here, and you guys can just arbitrarily take it away. It's 11 acres, it's tennis courts, it's a pool, it's a gym, and a sauna that people use. People that are elderly, people that are disabled, including myself, I use that pool a lot, I did. And that you guys could just take it away. I don't think that's right. I think that needs to be looked into, especially with the amount of money that comes into the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any remaining speakers? Seeing no one come forward, I would, I would ask the acting city manager to clarify the ownership of the pool, just so...
Not us.
Every, well, it's okay, just, no, no, we all, there was a comment... Every, well, it's okay, just, no, no, we all, there was a comment made that we're all live in the same community, but let's, let's draw the legal boundaries so people understand where we're working from, so it's clear and on the record.
Sure, Mayor. Beltair Swim and Racquet Club is the ownership of the Flagler County School District, and the school board is their governing body, so they executed that decision. With that being said, I had a great conversation with Ms. LaShaka Moore, the superintendent, on how we can collaborate on programs so that the residents are still seeing the need of services that they would like, so water aerobic programs, open swim time, swim lessons. So we're going to try and maintain some continuity and collaborate with the school district on Beltair Swim and Racquet Club.
Thank you with that. Um, with that, if there are no other comments, I would like to move to the minutes, and I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the city council business meeting held on March the 19th, 2024. Could I have a motion, please?
Make that motion.
Have a motion from Vice Mayor Danko to approve. May I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Clerk have the count. Thank you. Similarly, I would ask for a motion regarding the special budget workshop meeting held on March the 26th, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from the vice mayor. May I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. All in favor, please say.
Hyder, sorry.
I'm sorry. Can I say that? I apologize. My apologies. I have a second from Councilwoman Hyder. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Clerk have the count. Thank you. We now move to section G on the agenda, which would be ordinances of the second read. So if you would go ahead and proceed.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members.
Well, that is closest you can for me. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Estelle Lenz, planner with the city. This is the amendment to the sign code. This has been brought before the board for council a couple times now. Um, city council did approve the first reading of the ordinance on March 19th with the understanding that the definitions for permanent signage and temporary signage would be revised. We have since staff worked with the city attorney, Catherine Reichman, and we have revised those definitions. Um, the revised definitions were included with the agenda summary, and they're also, they've been changed in the ordinance itself. Additionally, staff has been working on a brochure to use as an educational tool to educate the public on the location of rights of way. Um, that is a draft, it is a work in progress, and we have included a draft of the brochure in the agenda item as well. So basically, I'm just here to answer questions. Uh, city attorney Catherine Reichman is also attending on Zoom, and she can answer questions. And Barbara Goodman was online. I'm not sure if she still is, in case you had questions for her.
So let me see if we have questions first. Uh, councilman, any questions on this?
Nope, we got it all.
Councilwoman Hyder?
No questions.
No questions.
No questions. I just appreciate you all clarifying the definitions that we asked for. I think it, it just makes it a tighter ordinance, and I appreciate the, the work that was put into it. Thank you.
I, I.
I was going to say, also note, if this is the last time that we interact with Ms. Reichman, I want to say thank you for everything over the years.
Oh, yes, yes. Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing that up.
And to Bill as well. Please send our best.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure.
Yes, thank you.
I don't have a, I don't have a question, but is there a map in progress which clearly defines the, um, the right-of-ways that can be a resource for folks for their signage?
Well, part of the brochure, all of the, the regular ITT lots in the neighborhoods, the, the right-of-way is 15 feet from the edge of pavement. It's pretty consistent throughout the city. I was actually surprised. And so those are all the residential neighborhoods. For the private neighborhoods, um, you really would have to check with the homeowners association to see if they had their own regulations. And then the other roads, which we did have a map of the major arterial and collector streets in the city of Palm Coast, we are including that map in the brochure.
Okay.
And we've also listed all of those major roads by name. And while the right-of-way vary greatly on those big streets, they're 100, 200 feet, whatever, but, but, um, in collaboration with Barbara, for code enforcement, as long as any signs are located at the tree line parallel, code enforcement won't pick them up. And if there are, you know, if there's not a tree line there, it's basically the utility poles. You just put them behind the utility poles, and code enforcement would not pick up the signs there. That would be considered outside of the right-of-way.
Okay, um, so that brochure will be available when?
Uh, it's almost complete. There was a copy of it in there. We just want to really add a couple of photographs of the neighborhood showing, hey, this is what it looks like when the sign's properly placed. And we'll have a couple of pictures of some of the major roads showing the signs parallel and showing them properly placed.
Ray, you want to comment?
Yeah, just, Mayor, I think, uh, thing, you know, we got a good draft going, and we will be working hand in hand with the association, with the realtors. That's key. We're going to get their feedback first on our draft, and we're going to ask them if they would, if they think that we should add things to that training and work with them and do a presentation with them.
Okay, and obviously, any other organizations that might, you know, bigger organizations that might use signage on a regular basis?
Absolutely.
Everybody's on the same page would be very, or same page of the brochure?
Yes.
Would be very helpful. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So if there are no other questions?
I just had one comment, if I may, um, and thank you for that, Ray. Um, I just want to really encourage staff, we want to be even-handed with this ordinance. Let's make sure we're enforcing it against everybody evenly. Um, I know there's some realtors in town who are very active and maybe feel like, hey, our signs get picked up when other organizational signs don't. I just really want to make sure we're, we're enforcing this across the board, we're, we're sticking with the same set of rules for everybody, including anything that is a sponsored event. If the right permits are garnered and acquired, great, just do your due diligence, do what you're supposed to do, but let's really make sure that we, as a city, are enforcing this evenly against everybody.
Thank you for that. Ray, another comment? You got it?
No, she's absolutely right.
Good.
Applying the code.
Just to make it, to get it into the record, counselor, I'm going to ask you to reread or read the ordinance into the record again for us, please.
This is second reading and ordinance of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, amending section 3.01.06, uses not permitted in the city. Chapter 3, zoning uses and dimensional standards of the city of Palm Coast Land Development Code to prohibit outdoor advertising, amending chapter 12, signs and advertising in the city of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code to ensure compliance with constitutional and other legal requirements, and to provide a purpose and intent, scope, amending section 14.02, glossary of chapter 14 of the city of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code to add, delete, and restate various definitions, amending criteria related to the amended definitions, providing that existing non-conforming signs may be continued, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. Again, second and final reading of this legislative item, also a public hearing item. Mayor?
Thank you. Um, so I would ask if there are any members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time, please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment on this item. Any final discussion from city council? Then roll call, please.
We need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we had a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Pontieri to approve, and a second from Councilwoman Clufus. Any further discussion? Then all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Sir Clerk, have the count?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now move to, um, item number, let's see, H8, I guess it is, and resolutions, if you would read that in for me, please.
Okay, this is an agreement with the Douglas Law Firm for Legal Services, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, approving the terms and conditions of an agreement with Douglas Law Firm for Legal Services, authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date. This is the, as the council directed, this is the proposed agreement for legal services for the next city attorney, and, um, it's up for a vote. Also, there is a engagement letter in this package with my firm for transitional services and any other services the council may need as needed, um, so.
So we'll do, we'll do one at a time.
At a time.
Very good. So let me, let's ask first, based on your package, are there any questions that you would like to ask regarding this?
I have none.
I don't, I don't have any questions. There were some clarifying issues that I wanted to address, but I don't know if you want me to cover that now or wait. I'll, I'll do it at your pleasure, Mayor.
Um, might as well get it out of the way now.
Okay. So, um, there's a couple sections where I would just like some things defined, or if we can hear from the Douglas firm on a couple things. So, uh, section 3A, there is a reference to retainer monies being applied to non-adversarial versus adversarial. These to me seem broad or vague. I, I know that may seem pretty obvious, but it's really not. You know, if we send a demand letter, but there's no response, is that considered adversarial or non-adversarial, you know? So that, I would like, because it is monies, I would like that defined. Also, there's a, a reference to significant real estate transactions, what qualifies as, as a significant real estate transaction. Then there was, uh, I, I know when we had the interviews, when all of the firms came here for the special workshop, I specifically asked, if the $30,000 per month is unused, does that money then roll over to the next month? And I don't believe we ever got a, a true answer on that. I think the answer we got was, we would be happy to discuss that, um, which is fine, but I, I don't think we clarified that.
I agree.
So, um, I know we're going to get monthly statements, but I'd also like to know, are, is this truly a year cap based on this contract so that those monies will roll over? Um, or is it kind of used or lose it? So I think we need that clarification.
So those are the questions. So are you able to address those at this time?
I am, sir.
Please, introduce yourself to our public and.
Thank you. Jeremiah Blocker with the Douglas Law Firm, 101 Market Side Avenue, Ponte Vedra, Florida. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. Um, if I could just kind of, just kind of go through that, I was trying to make sure I was following along. Let me address the last one first. So generally, right now, coming on board, um, you, our anticipation is, you know, the volume of work would, would be sufficient for the 30,000. We don't anticipate going over that. My understanding is there is some outside litigation as well. I've had the chance to talk to council on that. Um, some of that obviously is going to carry over with the contract that, that will be following this discussion. If there's litigation, yeah, there is some accounting for that as well, but our anticipation based on y'all's needs that, that we will not be going over that 30,000 amount. Hope that helps clarify that point. As far as I think adversarial, um, we were not, I'm expect, obviously, there are going to be circumstances that come up, or there'll be responses that will be due to outside parties that in of itself would not be treated as adversarial. What, what we would be looking for is if there was active litigation, that would be more adversarial, because like, most of the matters, I think, that would come up before, where there would be a written response, would be fairly, fairly, you know, things that could be addressed, hopefully pre-litigations, that would not, this would, adversarial would be, uh, we would define that as litigation.
Okay, so that's helpful. So you're, you're defining, you're using them interchangeably adversarial and litigation?
That's correct.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Does that give you an answer, um, on the first part, on the, on the, on the 30 grand?
Uh, you know, I mean, I, I see the contract allows us to readdress.
Yeah.
So it's something that, you know, if we find that it is something that we need to readdress, I think, you know, it's incumbent upon us to maybe keep an eye on.
We could bring it back and discuss it at that time. Okay, now, wasn't there a third thing?
Uh, I think he, he addressed it.
He did?
The adversarial versus non-adversarial.
Okay.
Um, adversarial versus non-adversarial. Say that three times fast. Uh, there was another question I had, though, for you while you're up here. Um, section 3C, you all mentioned, um, paying for CLEs. I, I think, based on your resume, you've, you currently represent other governmental entities. I just want to make sure, you know, some of these out-of-pocket expenses are not falling solely on us.
No, ma'am, completely understand. That, that, that was more focused on each client's going to be different, might have a specific need, so that would really, just to try to be as all-encompassing as possible. If there was a very specific targeted, uh, you know, legal education requirement that came up that we may not even be able to foresee right now. Um, every, every, you know, one of the things that's unique about your city is you have a lot of dog bite cases. That's different from some of the other clients that we have, and I'm not sure what's going on with the dogs here, but they're, so that, things like that are, you know, not foreseeable, so we want to make sure that we are trying to capture as much as possible. So no surprises.
Okay.
But we don't anticipate coming on, handing you bills for CLEs. That's, that's really just, uh, uh, you know, I would say fairly unique.
Okay, and I, and I'm not attacking you all personally, be asking the same questions to any firm.
No, of course, absolutely.
So just want to make sure, like I said, if you are kind of spreading the knowledge, then that those expenses should be spread as well, but understand your response.
And Councilwoman, you did have a question about substantial. I don't know if it's necessary to put a number to it.
Yeah, the significant real estate transactions. What are we defining a significant real, thank you, Mayor, what are we defining a significant real estate transaction?
Well, I think, I think, uh, again, we would be following under kind of the general agreements we have with some of our other clients as well. So if there's a, there's a major multi-year transactions that are going on, um, you know, and let's say for whatever reason, the relationship does not continue, some of these real estate developments, some of these go on for, for a number of years, or they're different, so we want to make sure that we captured that, so if we were involved in that before it was turned over to another client. I think that, I think the example of that would be what you have with your current council, even though they're no longer going to continue, there's some ancillary and, and additional matters that they're going to tidy up. So, well, when I say significant, we're getting, we're trying to be all encompassing, making sure we're covering as much as possible, so we're not having to come, come back and renegotiate every time that we run into something.
Yeah, I think my concern is that we're, we are reopening our comp plan, and we are expanding west, so we are going to have some significant real estate transactions come up, I have no doubt. Um, if, if, if those general services, drafting agreements, obviously, I know you all aren't going to recreate the wheel, um, we all have templates, right, in law firms, so.
Sure.
If, if those things are, you know, where do we draw the line? What, what is, what is considered a significant real estate deal and what's not?
For sure. So, so what, the, the current retainer that we've negotiated with y'all, we believe is going to encompass all that. If there's a scenario where we go beyond that, where obviously it's taking up much more, more time than, than was anticipated, then I think that's something we would owe it to y'all as a client to come and have that conversation out in the open, uh, in front of the public to discuss. Um, again, I think some of these are written in a way where you're trying to make sure that you foresee any issue that comes up, based on prior experience with other clients. What we want to avoid is having to come in for y'all every couple of months and say, hey, look, you know, this has gone beyond what, you know, y'all need stability, we want to have stability in that regard. Um, we can certainly modify it based on y'all's, but I don't anticipate any issue y'all have coming up with major comp plan amendments that are going to change, you know, our current base structure.
Yeah, I guess what I would ask is at the end of all of our business, all of our meetings, actually, we ask for council comments. If you all can just keep those lines of communication open with us.
Absolutely.
And let us know, hey, we see this on the horizon, just want to give you all a heads up, and, and just, like I said, just be transparent, that would be great.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
And utilize that, that the comments at the end, should there be something?
Yes, exactly.
Good, very good. So then we don't require any language change in the agreement that we're discussing. Anyone? Comments or questions at this time? Okay, then I would open this item up to the public, um, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
For any comments regarding this agenda item at this time.
Celia Puglisi, just one question. Might be funny or not, but this law firm, Douglas, doesn't have anything to do with Douglas, the developer, all over Palm Coast? No. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Peter Johnson, Palm Coast. I assume that this is probably going to get approved. I just want to take a moment to thank our current legal for all the work that they've done over the past time, and really appreciate they put a lot of work to the city. So thank you.
Thank you for your, for your comment. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Marilyn Mack, the F-section. My question goes a little...
Do me a favor, just bring the mic a little bit closer so we can hear. Thank you.
My question goes a little bit further. Is this new law firm have any connections to Bern Dogg or Jeff and Walker Douglas or Douglas Properties?
No.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to ask about in the meeting two weeks ago, I believe it was two weeks ago. Since the city manager had been fired, being Denise Bevins, she wasn't here to do the announcement on the emergency sole source that was done back in February of 2024. And the clerk brought it up, but you all, like, pushed it under and didn't bring it up. I was just curious what it was.
Bring them, so we could, just can't quite hear you on the mic.
I'm sorry. I was curious what the emergency sole source procurement was that you all did back in February. It wasn't announced because Denise Bevins wasn't here?
I'll have staff follow up with you with the details on that.
Right, because there's nothing on the website about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'll close public comment, and I would, if there's no further discussion, I would ask for a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
I'm sorry. I have a motion from Vice Mayor Danko, and a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. Any further discussion? Then let's do a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alfin?
Yes, and I can only hope that the longevity of this agreement is similar to what we have enjoyed with our prior firm. So, very good. All right, with that, we will move on. Do you have the count?
Yes, the motion passed unanimously. And Mayor, we do have a second piece to this item.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead. We have to, I'm going, can you frame the motion for us? This is a motion to...
Accept Garganese's transition plan document. That was identified in your agenda packet for services.
So I'm going to ask for a motion to, to accept the, the firm's transition document that was in our package.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Councilwoman Hyder. Is there any further discussion?
Just briefly, thank you once again to your firm. You guys have been great. Hoping Nasa is thriving in her new position, and just want to really thank you for all your hard work, the long hours. We do not have short meetings very often. So for the diligence and the, the wherewithal to stick with us and for a long time and just really provide good services, thank you.
And with that, I would open up this item, if there's no further discussion, to the public. Anyone want to comment at this time?
Thank you for the long services, Mr. Garganese and company. And also, I hope the new firm, they know very good about land development. It's very important for the city.
Thank you for your comment. If there are no other public speakers, I will ask for a roll call.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alfin?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
We now move to our final resolution this evening, H9. If council would read that in for me, please. Make it good.
Make it good. All right. On a slow roll. Resolution of the City Council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, authorizing piggybacking Omni Partners contract RFP 08-2022, 0822, with Ferguson Enterprises for Plumbing Supplies, HVAC Products, and Building Supplies, providing legislative and administrative findings, providing for future amendments, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date. This is ready for action. How fitting. A plumbing contract from my last resolution read into the record.
I didn't, I didn't pick it, but I appreciate your, you're pointing that out to us. Are there any questions from City Council members regarding this issue? Seeing none, I would, I would, I would ask for a motion. We'll go out to the public in a minute.
I'll motion to approve the...
I have a motion to approve, and a second from the Vice Mayor. Any other discussion here? And I would open up this item to the public. Are there any final comments regarding this item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment. And I think that we would be okay with, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now move to final public participation. And you guys have kind of stolen the thunder. I'm sorry. Final public participation. Are there any other items that you all would like to discuss this evening? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close final public participation. Come back to the dais. City Council members, so if I may, because you stole the thunder. So tonight, we are on the precipice of a notable transition as we bid farewell to the dedicated service of Garganese, Weiss, Degresta, and Saltzman Law Firm, who has faithfully served our city for nearly 17 years. We extend our heartfelt gratitude for their unwavering support over the years. Their contribution has been invaluable, and we are grateful that they will help facilitate a seamless transition to our new legal representation with the Douglas firm. And with that, the role of city attorney, as you all know, is vital. Mr. Duffy and the Douglas Law Firm will lead efforts for the city of Palm Coast. He is a distinguished individual bringing a wealth of experience, including six years of service in the United States Air Force. His accolades speak volumes about his dedication and expertise in legal matters. The services provided by the Douglas Law Firm will encompass a comprehensive array of legal responsibilities crucial to our city's operations. I truly believe in the Douglas Law Firm's ability to uphold the highest standards of legal counsel for the city of Palm Coast. We look forward to the beginning of this collaboration, beginning today following our meeting. So with that, I would open it up. Any final City Council member comments for this evening's meeting?
I will say ditto to what you just said, and let it go with that.
Just like you, thank you, Mr. Garganese and your firm. Thank you very much.
Yeah, but I would also like to extend my tremendous gratitude over the years. You guys have been absolutely instrumental. You are amazing people, and you have given so much assistance, not only to me, but other City Council members who have come before us. And I'll tell Bill, keep hitting him long and straight on the golf course until I see him the next time.
Thank you.